Evening everyone, this is Mayor Cornell Harvey along with Commissioner Julie Martin, Commissioner Johnny Kason, Commissioner Vincent Williams, and Mayor Pro Ten Felicia Harris. I'd like to call to order of the City Council meeting dated about Wednesday, September 1st. We will have, this is a Zoom meeting streamlined and we will start our meeting off with invocation by Commissioner Williams followed by Commissioner Martin leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Williams?
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we come now in the blessed name of Jesus. Father, we pause and we say thank you for this day. Thank you for this beautiful city that we live in, our home Brunswick, Georgia. And Father, we ask now that as we come to do the business of this great city, that you would lead us and you would guide us, Father, that you would direct us. While we realize that we may not always please everyone, but God, we want to please you. So we ask now that you would give us, grant us mercy and grant us peace and understanding in all that we do. Love you and we give you great praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
He will, the Pledge of Allegiance, a pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams, and thank you, Commissioner Mark. And thank you all who have joined in with us for this meeting. Before I get started, are there any additional deletions to our meeting for this evening, I mean to our agenda?
Mayor, I do have one request.
Yes, sir.
Under City Attorney items, my item, I had been kind of monitoring some of the comments and concerns about the policy that has been put forth for consideration and discussion tonight. And I've also heard from some city commissioners as to potential revisions they might like to see done to that policy. So I'd asked that it be deferred to the next meeting on September 15th so that I could address those concerns with the city commissioners and make sure those revisions are put in place.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a motion on that, Commissioner?
I'll make a motion that we defer item number five under City Attorney items.
And then offered, it'd been motion is second to defer item number five on the City Attorney items until our next meeting, which is September 15th. Any further discussion in the comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And your opposers? Okay, that motion cares. We would defer item number five until our September 15th meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Alright, our first item on our agenda is an appeal. It's appeal, number one, appeal of the Historic Preservation Board decision to deny certificate of appropriateness for new construction at 1305 Gloucester Street. John Hunter is the one, he's presented. John?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a number of people with us online tonight who are involved with this. Judge Orion Douglas and two members of his design team, Vernoris James and Louis Brooks. And we also have members of the Historic Preservation Board, including Charles Day, who was the newly elected chairman, Will Worley, who was vice chair, Sarah Gina Caukis, and Josh Dukes are all with us. The Historic Preservation Board reviewed the certificate of appropriateness for new construction at 1305 Gloucester Street at their July 19th workshop meeting. Feedback was provided regarding the design of the building and items of particular concern were the use of a hip roof, the choice of hardy board siding, and the departure in style from surrounding commercial buildings. I'm going to share my screen and you can see the submission as I walk through. The applicant informed the Historic Preservation Board that they could change the stucco, but we're not in favor of the flat roof and parapet design of the surrounding commercial structures. You see here the original proposed design along with some other elevations that are in your packet. Prior to the August 2nd regular meeting, they submitted an update, updated design, which added dormers to the roof, awnings to the storefront and changes the siding to stucco. The Historic Preservation Board denied the application 7-0 as under the historic district guidelines, infill construction is to be influenced by the character of the district as well as the direct area of influence surrounding the proposed new structure. As a corner lot, the area of influence for 1305 Gloucester is primarily the existing historic structures on the adjacent corners. When examining the adjacent commercial structures, the board determined that the predominant building form was a single-story commercial storefront with a parapet and a low-sloped or flat roof design. The board believed that the proposed tall gable design for the roof was incompatible with the historic commercial structures within the area of influence and denied the certificate of appropriate based upon this design. Just to show you what the Historic Preservation Board was looking at when they made their decision with our design guidelines. It shows the area of influence for a corner lot as being those buildings closest to it along the corners and then potentially some of the surrounding buildings. And then within the historic context of itself, buildings are to, you know, recognize the relationship of elements and how they fit within the context of the buildings that surround them. The, in particular with roof shapes, appendages, pitches and materials, there are a variety of roof shapes and types found within a historic district. The area of influence for each project will provide focus on this and other architectural characteristics. So what the Preservation Board looked at was the site itself along Gloucester, the adjacent commercial structures which directly across Gloucester, we can see the single-story flat roof building. Just up Gloucester, we also have two flat-roofed, single-story buildings as well. So that is what they were considering when they made their decision. Subsequently, since the Preservation Board's decision was made and the appeal was requested by Judge Douglas, he and his team have submitted an updated rendering with a new design that does incorporate a flat roof and a parapet similar to what you see with the other surrounding buildings. It would also be stucco as requested by the Historic Preservation Board. One other request that was made was in the original design, there was a double handicap ramp access on the front of the building and that has been changed to a single handicap ramp at the front of the building. This gives you a little bit more of a head-on and rear view. And this sign is compliant with the request from the Historic Preservation Board. That's a quick summary of how we got to where we are today. We do have, as I mentioned, the applicant, some of his representatives here, if they would like to fill in with any other comments or requests. And then we also have members of the Preservation Board here as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Hunter, I've got one question. If the drawings are incompatible, why are we here?
I will refer that to Judge Douglas. And it was his request to continue with the appeal.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. We were really compelled to file the appeal. It's my understanding that the Historic Board met on August 2nd, denying the certificate. We were given no notice of it whatsoever, not one thing in writing. We thought we were still in the process of advising plans and submitting them, not knowing at all that this board had met August 2nd. They did not invite us to that meeting. They denied it and nothing was communicated to us. We learned inadvertently on August 13th by hearsay that our petition was denied. That was the first we knew we'd gotten denied. As you all know, you have 15 days to file an appeal from a decision of the Historic Board. Now, by the time we heard the notice, nine days had transpired. Our time for appeal had run out. So I requested of Mr. Hunter to please put in writing the action of the board and state the reasons for doing so. We subsequently got it in writing on August 18th. That's one day subsequent to the time for us to take an appeal. So we had to file an appeal to the city to preserve our rights. We had submitted already the flat roof design. We had agreed to every point they suggested of us. But we had to take the appeal to preserve our rights because nothing was sent to us in writing at all until 18 days after they made a decision. We were frustrated. We called daily from August 2nd trying to inquire what was the action of this board. Nothing was committed, nothing in writing. And only by luck or by the grace of God, that I happened to be engaged in a conversation with certain individuals and discovered on the 13th, that's what, nine days later, or really 11 days later, that they had already entered a denial of our appeal, but we were never, ever noticed by them. But that's why I filed an appeal before this council, to preserve our rights of appeal, to communicate to you everything they requested for us, even though it's a question as to whether it can be required, had been agreed to. But there was nothing in writing. We thought the matter was all open and then we had to take an appeal just to preserve our rights. I think Mr. Hunter will agree that every request that this Historic Board made, we agreed to. We had our designers to go back to the drawing board, resubmit drawings. And all during that period of time, no one said the certificate had already been denied. So we had to take the action we took now to preserve our rights on appeal. But we see no reason why we should not be granted our permit since we have agreed to everything the board had requested. Even though there's an issue as to whether, well, I don't really don't deal with any issues. Where I am now is funds have been secured, financed for the project. We are paying interest monthly on these funds. We're not being able to utilize them to build the building. And hence, it's causing serious financial issues with respect to Steve Cohen Corporation. Corporation is dysfunctional under this. The hiring of designers, we have to repay them to do draft after draft based on requests, everything verbal, nothing in writing. And so we had no choice. So sitting the past aside, we have agreed to everything everyone has requested of us. We met with Mr. Hunter and he gave us a checklist of the kind of findings and research that needs to be done. Our designer has submitted it all to him. So we're just asking today that this delay comes and ends, that we be granted our building permit and allow us to proceed with the project.
Thank you, Judge Douglas. Thank you for giving us update on that. I know we also have Mr. Charles Day, who is the president of the Historic Preservation Board.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak to a couple of those items?
Yes, you can.
The, at the beginning of the process prior with the submission with Mr. Bro, with the original submission which came from Mr. Brooks, he was informed at that time about our two-step meeting process with a workshop in July and the regular meeting where the decision would be made on August 2nd. After the workshop meeting, I was in communication with Mr. Brooks, who was his lead designer and was the applicant of record. And on July 28th, I emailed him some suggestions for some potential changes and reminded him of the meeting on August 2nd and offered to teleconference him in via Zoom because I knew they would be coming from Savannah to attend the meeting. And he replied to that and said that the August 2nd meeting date was fine. Now, I then spoke after the decision was made with another member of the design team, Mr. James. I believe it was either the Thursday or Friday after the meeting on the 2nd and informed him of the denial and discussed different options with him and about the feedback from the Preservation Board. I did fail to get the information in writing to them in a quick timeframe, but I was under the impression from Mr. James that they understood and would be resubmitting an updated design shortly. Judge Douglas is correct that they have submitted updates and new plans that are compliant with the requests of the Historic Preservation Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Mr. Day, are you on board?
Yes, sir.
Anything you'd like to say?
I would just like to go along with statements that have been previously provided. Us as the Historic Preservation Board have reviewed the designs and agreed that more consideration needed to be given to the location and the architectural components of the building to make sure that we're adequately representing that intersection and creating a, will become more of a node in the historic downtown district. I would just also like to state, I guess, kind of called a question kind of the process of what's been presented here this evening. This has been represented as an appeal to the decision made by the Historic Preservation Board on the design with the hip roof that we had denied and that a new design has been presented. And I would just ask the commission to please allow us the due process of reviewing the new design and going through the steps and phases that all other applicants in the community have to abide by.
Okay. Alright, thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Commissioners, do you have any comments of what you want, any questions to either Mr. Hunter, Mr. Day, or Judge Douglas?
Commissioner Martin, I would just say that it's unfortunate as to the unfolding of the timing. It does sound like the applicant was as compliant as they could be in revising plans. And I would just ask that compensation be made as much as possible, the short circuit or speed up the time. I think as Judge Douglas said, there's funding hanging in the balance and each day that clicks by gets more and more expensive. So to the degree that the Historic Preservation Board could meet perhaps sooner than they may normally meet. And the same might happen as far as if we have to do something special from the commission in order to move things forward if everything is approved through the Historic Preservation Board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This is Mayor Pro Ten. My, I guess my question would be, and I echo those same sentiments that Commissioner Martin has just stated. My question would be, what would be the only thing that would be holding this approval up per the Historic Board? Because from what has been said, everything else has been approved. The main thing was the changing of the design of the roof. So can there not be an immediate, a special call meeting so that this can be reviewed and moved forward?
Okay.
I may.
Go ahead.
The applicant was invited to resubmit the new design for the process and the workshop was last week, I believe, last Monday, and that would have put the Historic Preservation Board decision for Tuesday, September 7th. And the applicant's decision was to not submit the redesign for the Historic Preservation Board workshop and that he was going to be appealing the decision that we made at the previous Historic Preservation Board meeting.
I'd like to respond to that. The new design was submitted to the Historic Board prior to the workshop. Mr. Hunter had it a few days ago and he requested it. We immediately redesigned, so.
Judge, you had informed me that you did not want to go back before the Historic Preservation.
I had no desire to go back before the Historic Commission because I felt I was treated unfairly that they would take such an action on August 2nd. And I wouldn't, and I wouldn't have known anything about it except by accident and my appeal time would have expired. But where I am now is past is past and, you know, I'm really ready to move forward in the future. But I see no reason now why I can't get my permit tonight. Everybody agrees, everything has been submitted.
I'd like to speak if I can. This is Vernoris James. Yes, so what we're basically reviewing is a lot of verbal conversations and very little in writing. And what I'd like to share with the board is that if it's not in writing, it didn't happen. As far as I'm concerned, that's how I do my business. And we had verbal conversations, yes, there was something said, but there was other things that was allegedly said that was not transferred over, if you will, or maybe not even said. So from the time that the appeal to the date, I received very little in writing. Even, I've asked a number of times.
Mr. James, Mr. Hunter has already alluded to him not getting something in writing to you guys as well. He's really alluded to that.
I'd like to add, excuse me if you don't mind, is that every item that was requested has been addressed in the new drawings that was submitted a week ago. So I don't understand why there needs to be another review when the items that came back in writing from the review board, the nine to 10 items were fully addressed in detail.
Okay, so if I can, remember that we need to keep two items separate here. One is the certificate appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Board. The other item were a list of nine or 10 items that were needed for the building permit process for the review by the building official, the fire marshal, joint water and sewer, and all of those items. So the request from the Historic Preservation Board has always been limited to the change in siding from hardy board to stucco, which was complied with, the change in the handicap ramp, and the design of the roof.
And those things have been complied with.
Yes, sir, they have.
I hate to throw a wrench. This is City Manager Regina McDuffie. But I guess flat roofs always bother me. Has there, I mean, has that not become a maintenance issue? And I noticed that there was some properties, you know, maybe a block down the street that had pitched roofs. So why was it so much of a, I guess, request for the roof to be flat? I mean, I've always had problems with flat roofs and I, you know, don't understand the, I guess, why that was such an issue.
I'm glad you asked that. I was going to ask that as well because I was going to make a reference to the Safe Harbor House. And it's a corner block.
And may I suggest this to you? We followed the guidelines of the Historic Board for getting approval. And I'm sure the board members have read it, but at the end of their guidelines about what is a historic district and what's required, on page 30 of the Q and A that follows, the question is asked, "If I am building a new structure, does it have to be of historic design?" The answer they provided, "No," period. There will be nothing in the guideline to preclude contemporary architecture. The Historic Preservation Commission will review the plans for any proposed construction to ensure that it will be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and not have a negative influence. So there really was no requirement that because there was a building across the street with a flat roof, all the buildings have to have a flat roof. It says, "No, there are no guidelines, but we cannot afford to fight that issue any further. We need to start building tomorrow. Today is September 1st, another month interest has to be paid. And I would be willing to forego any compensation if you would just grant us our permit today so we can start doing our project tomorrow."
Judge Douglas, thank you for your comment. Commissioner Kason, you have any comment?
Yes, certainly unfortunate that this has happened without a question and the delay is costly and it probably needs to be considered. It's no question about it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may I? May I comment, please?
Yes, Mr. Worley.
Commissioners, I'm Will Worley. I was chaired at the meeting where Judge Douglas's application was denied. And I feel like there's been a lot of mischaracterization of the sequence of events that happened here tonight. I think a lot of blame is being put on the Historic Preservation Board and I think that's misplaced blame. And I think this focus on a flat roof is misplaced. It's being characterized as Historic Preservation Board said, "Put a flat roof on it or we're not approving this thing." At the work session, we had several suggestions for Judge Douglas and his team. One was the stucco siding, one was the design of the roof. But the biggest issue was the building that they proposed could be anywhere. It could be, it would fit in on exit 29, it would fit in at any interstate. It had no elements of any kind of historic nature. And, you know, I think this idea that there are no requirements that new construction have any kind of historical elements is completely wrong. At that meeting, when we brought up the roof, again, these were all suggestions by the Historic Preservation Board. We don't go in there and make commands. We make suggestions to try to get this thing approved. Judge Douglas flat refused. He said, "I want that roof and I'm not changing it." This new design is much better and does reflect a lot of the input that Historic Preservation Board made at that meeting, but we've not seen it. I learned about this new design yesterday. So I would ask that you give the Historic Preservation Board an opportunity to do its job, which is to review this new application per our guidelines and then make a decision on it.
You had the design over a week.
I haven't. I haven't seen it. I saw it yesterday.
That's between you and your board.
You made the, you made the. Hold up, everybody, hold up. Back up there a minute, okay? Alright, we understand exactly what's going on. We're not going to go back and forth. We're not going to do that. So we understand exactly where we at, understand the issue at hand. Commissioner Williams, do you have any comment?
Mayor, Commissioner Williams lost.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah.
No problem. I'll give my opinion. My opinion, I agree with Judge Douglas, the fact that he's losing money. I agree with everybody that time is money. It's a timing issue with, I think, with Judge Douglas that he wants to, the reason why he brought this before this commission is that he wants to have a decision made right away instead of waiting to September 7th to have a meeting to. to have a meeting to to possibly uh get to to get approval. So therefore, he wants a decision made now to alleviate him having to wait even further. Uh, so um, but uh I'll also understand uh historic preservation issue um that they would like to have a uh comment, have the ability to do their job, to build it, to look at what's been proposed uh and do their job. So with all that, I I feel, just me, I feel that we need to have have the historic preservation call, a special call meeting, which will be tomorrow, or make decision one way or the other. And if they can't make a decision, then the city council will have a special call meeting on Friday to make a decision for them before, you know. Uh, and that way it won't be strung out further and further because our next meeting is on the fifteenth. Um, historic preservation meeting is on the seventh, which continue uh for uh Mr. Douglas paying money or someone pay that interest for Judge Douglas, since he was not given, yes.
I may, I hate to interrupt you. Um, but I'm sure you've heard the adage, if you fail the plan, you plan to fail. And it seems like we're in a situation where the due diligence wasn't put on the forefront of this. And now uh the professional careers of everybody on this board is kind of put online. If you're demanding a special meeting called tomorrow, I know I've got a full day booked and I'm sure everyone else on my board does as well. And uh just for reference, uh Saint Francis Xavier uh has proposed to design uh build a new elementary school downtown. And that's great news. We're glad to have it. Uh, before they were even required to, they presented something to the board just to get feedback. And we gave that to them and they listened to our requests. They complied. They were happy to make the changes. We went through uh four to six meetings with them where the design was revised and uh s- submitted in a timely manner where, you know, this was not a a problem with them. And uh to think that this isn't it, that that should be commonplace practice, I feel like in our community and uh me as an architect, I do the same thing within all of my projects. This is a a rare occasion where we're kind of chasing the tail on this and I I just really would request that the commission, um, you know, uh I I hate that this is happening. I hate that this has been delayed. I hate that uh our feedback wasn't listened to at the workshop. Um, but I think we should move forward with the regular process and th- this is this is on the on the team of of professionals that is working on this project.
Sir, thank you for your comment. I I appreciate it. I understand what you're saying. Um, I know nowadays we can do uh irrespective of everyone's day, everyone's uh professional uh uh day to have to do for tomorrow and the next day and so forth. I understand that fact, too. I know we can do things via Zoom uh and uh we can get things virtually done. Uh, so uh that just my my comment. However, uh, this is not up to me to do that. It's up to the commission to decide what they want to do. Your input is very valuable to us as well. Uh, irregardless, we're not trying to throw uh mud on any one of the professionals that have been have has been presented here today. We just want to get get things done to help our city grow. That's that's our main purpose, help our city grow. We appreciate what you guys do. We appreciate when the contractor coming in to want to build in our city. So i- it's no disparagement to anyone. The issue is, how do we get it done? How do we get it done in in a in a uh very expedient way? Uh, so uh I hear Commissioner Williams is on board. Anything you'd like to say, Commissioner Williams?
Well, from what I've heard so far, I I understand that we we this situation has been delayed somewhat. Uh, and there's a lot of back and forth with who did what or who didn't do what. Uh, I think when I, when I, when I got cut off, the judge was talking about um the dates and times that he got things um or to him or to his committee. Um, and then I hear the preservation society saying, you know, the dates and times that they got things and so um with that being said, I I would, you know, uh, the appeal has been made to the commission. Um, I would think that if 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 we're not wanting to or not ready to make a decision at this point or uh because it's been appealed to the commission, I think that the commission needs to act on it one way or another.
Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioners, we 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 write that to uh quandary as in to um uh irregardless of um the the flat roof has been submitted. Uh, we still, uh, a decision has to be made either by historic preservation board or by by this board here as an appeal. We can uh not allow this appeal to go through or satisfy this appeal by by the the board itself, board commissioners themselves to make decisions.
Let me ask this. Can I ask this question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What it from what Mr. Hunter was saying to us originally is that the preservation society asked them to go back and do the flat roof and a couple of other things, the 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 facade on the building as far as tabby and so so forth. And they've agreed to do all those things, correct?
Stucco, not tabby.
Stucco, okay.
Yeah, there's a difference.
Yeah, that's that's a difference. But they've agreed to do, they've agreed to do the things that the 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 historic preservation has has asked them to do to this point.
Yes, they have submitted a drawing for that, yes.
Well, I, in in that case, then I I I, you know, I'm of this opinion. What 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 seems to be the problem? What's the contention? Oh, I mean, whether we make the decision or the historic preservation board makes a decision, a decision needs to be made.
Yeah, the this.
I I I I think that, you know, um why, why would we want to hold up uh construction in our in our city and 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 they've complied with the things that the historic preservation board has asked for? Why can't we move it forward? That's just my opinion.
That's a good opinion, sir. Um, and um, we'll leave that right there. Uh, I haven't heard from my city attorney.
I am here uh taking it all in. I would say that if there was a suggestion for any special call meetings this week, I think we would run into quite a bit of notice requirements. Uh, public notice requirements, whether it be two days or three days and getting those put in place. So I'm not so sure how realistic the timeframe would be on getting those special call meetings um this week. Uh, with that said, you know, the the appeal section, while the historic preservation ordinance is lengthy, the appeal section is uh, you know, comprised of one paragraph that basically sets forth the city commission's role in this as being either one to approve, modify, or reject the determination of the historic preservation board. And I think what that decision is a- at the moment, it was a denial of the certificate of appropriateness for the plans that had been presented. So that's the decision that's before the city commission tonight. And, you know, how you wish to move forward with that would be to, it sounds like there may not be an approval of the denial if there's a modification to accept the um the the plan, the plans that have been resubmitted. Um, or of course, there would just be a rejection of the um their decision. But that, I think that is the decision is before the city commission tonight. Um, and and that's where that you know, the two different sets of plans, whether those had been placed in front of the historic preservation board or not. Um, the original decision sounds like that's the one that the city commission needs to rule on.
So we we have processes and procedures in place as a as a city commission and as a uh historic preservation board. And I think it's important that we adhere to those. I think it's also uh interesting to note that financing is in place before a final design has been approved. Notwithstanding that, I would be in favor and I'll be happy to make a motion that we um put this back before the historic preservation board for consideration based on this last um design that is more compliant with the guidelines that we do have in place. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. I got a motion, I got a second. Uh uh Commissioners, are there any comments or questions that most?
The the only comment I would make further and I'm, if this is an amendment to that um motion would be um and and legal if Corey, Mr. Corey agrees that we would not have to, you know, that the applicant would not have to come back before the full commission if the historic preservation board approves this latest revision on their design. If that's.
I don't think they would, right. I don't think he would. I mean, he it would only be, the decision would only come back before the city commission if another appeal was lodged.
Okay. Okay.
When will I have this meeting?
Uh, sir, please, sir. Me. Sir, hold up, Judge.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Let's go through the process, okay? Okay.
All right.
Um. All right. Any other comment, Commissioners, on on the motion?
Um, uh, this is Mayor Proten. Okay, so in order to bring all of this together, and and I do agree with um Commissioner Martin. And I heard uh Brian saying about the noticing process. Is there not time enough to try to uh bring this to a conclusion by Friday?
Okay, uh, I'll allow Mr. Day to answer that.
I'm 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 directing that to Brian.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that feels like a question to me. I don't, I don't believe that there is enough time. I mean, I believe the city commission special call meeting would, it requires, I believe, forty-eight hours. Um, I think.
City commission, we're talking about historic preservation board. Because that's who it's addressed to.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think I I believe that there's a similar notice requirement for their special call meetings. I'd have to review their their internal, you know, the ordinance or their bylaws if they have them. Um, when is the actual, when would the the earliest meeting um for the historic preservation presently set be able to be heard?
We have a meeting on September seventh.
That's that's Tuesday. So if if this can, if this can be moved up and and I'm trying to take into account, uh, because I heard uh Mr. Days um uh his statement regarding what he has already planned um for work, and I understand that with your scheduling, because I I have a tight one myself for my job. Um, but also trying to be um uh not sympathetic but empathetic with the position of of the of the applicant as well and understanding the financial situation and all of that stuff. I I still feel that there's a way that we can, we can kind of bring this stuff to expedite. Um, uh, and not cause any more harm on the applicant as well as accommodate uh our board, because, I mean, they are volunteers as well. Um, and so they do have jobs. Um, and so how can we work this out together? Let's put aside all of the other stuff that who said this or didn't say this, and I understand not receiving stuff in writing, but how can we, if it were you in this how can we accommodate and expedite this to make sure that we don't, I'm not a professional. So I do rely on the architect and those who have those expertise. So for me to take a look at it, um, I'm going off of what I'm reading. Um, but I don't have that in-depth knowledge as an architect or or those others who have that specialty. But I do have an understanding of what I read and what I see. And so putting all that stuff aside, making sure, how can we expedite this and move this um, move this further?
Mr. Mayor, why can't you, why can't you go to the second? Why can't you go with the second option? Of granting the uh permit with the modification?
Uh, Judge, we can do that, that, but right now we have a motion on the floor, so we're gonna, we're gonna deal with that. Uh, and.
Let me ask, let me ask a question, Mr. Mayor, and and I'm I'm just wondering, how many people from the port, from the uh preservation board is on on the call tonight? Do they, do they have a majority?
John, how many people on on the board?
Four of the seven members are on the board tonight.
So four of the seven are on the board, so they have a quorum. Am I correct? Nobody's saying that.
Yes, sir, it it is a.
So so could that quorum do a special call meeting tonight via Zoom while they're on Zoom? And 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 handle that situation?
Ryan, right, we it it even step back. Let's make sure, we gotta make sure.
Yeah, I'm just.
No, I mean, I wouldn't be comfortable saying that that would be an appropriate thing to do.
I'm not comfortable with that either. Yeah.
Okay. This is Johnny Casey, and you had several issues there, too, uh, according to John Hunter, that really need to be resolved here. It's not just the one issue. If I heard him right.
That's not correct.
Well, I think as as we uh, wait a minute, Judge, uh, this this is really basically between the Commissioners here and and uh I I'll give you permission to go ahead and speak, and then we'll make a decision. Okay, sir, you go ahead.
You speaking to me?
Yes, Judge Douglas, go ahead. Yes.
Second option allows the commission to make a ruling to grant the permit. Actually, grant the permit with the with with the modification. And the modification has been presented to a quorum of the historic board been presented, and everybody's on the same page that there should be no issue. The grant certificate. Um, but if they if they cannot meet before the seventh, this this count, this council has the authority to grant the permit with the modification.
Yes, sir.
All to agree is what they requested. Not only purpose of delay is being proposed for the purposes of process, but that's costly to the citizen. Um, it's like we're being denied to do process. Uh, we we gone through everything, we've given everything. And at our expense, we're concerned with process. You know, process would require a letter to be sent on August the seventh. Seems like it beats me. Process will require that the rules be read, but I'm not here to deal with that part.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm hemorrhaging money. And I'm I'm asking tonight that that second option that the that the this council grants a permit with the modifications of the flat roof and everything else, and allow me to go on and proceed with the work.
Thank you for your comment, Judge. Um, Commissioners, uh, as as we move forward, this this motion is on on the floor. Um, before I close it out, any further other comments?
This, this is Mayor Proten again. I I've got to step back in on this.
Okay.
Um. Because as defined by our attorney, our issue is not the modification. Our issue is the appealing of the denial of the initially submitted and so that's what, that's where we, that's where we are. We cannot set a precedent that we forego um what needs to be in place. And per the historic board, those second drawings, though they may be in compliance with some of the suggestions, have not been reviewed. So have we reviewed them? Are we in a seat or position to review them?
Well, Mayor Proten, I think.
I understand and I feel what 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 Judge Douglas is saying. But so now, we're now gonna be reviewing drawings?
Mayor Proten. Uh, Judge Douglas is not just.
I'm I'm sorry. Okay.
Uh, Mayor Proten, um, this board has authority to do that, to to overrule historic preservation board, even if they recommend a tall steeple, steeple rule. We can say, no, we don't want that. So we are the final approval. E- even though we are not, we are not architects, we're we're not, we don't know all that, but we have the have the right to, we had the final approval authority, just like, so we are, we are now uh considering the denial of the request, even though Judge has presented something else to the board. Uh, so that can be taken into consideration if a motion was made for that, just like the judge said. However, right now, we are just looking at only what Commissioner Martin, uh, her motion that said that uh for us to send it back to the historic preservation for them to take a look at it and for them to make make a ruling on it before they send it back to us. If they send it back to us or if they say no, then Judge Douglas, I guess he'd be having to come back to us again with the same thing. Then we have to rule on, rule on that. So right now, we have to rule on uh the denial of his petition back when when um now, and and also then we can, if if need be, make a motion to um move forward with the modifications. Now, what this does, it 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 makes, it makes us, uh, somebody's gonna um not feel good about. Now, what this does, it 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 makes, it makes us, uh, somebody's gonna, um, not feel good about, about the decision. So one way or the other, we still have to make a decision. We we like what our Historic Preservation Board does, and 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 we we kind of assume that they would approve the flat roof, whether they do or not, it doesn't matter to this commission, because this commission has to make a decision about it one way or the other. Um, so, uh, but right now, what's on the floor is, uh, Commissioner Martin's, uh, motion, the second by Commissioner Kason. Um, and we are in our discussion period. Now, before, and I'm, I'm gonna close this out unless someone have anything else to say, and then we'll come, come to a vote.
I would like to ask one question.
Oh, sir, you cannot, sorry.
Okay.
No, sir. Okay, are there any further questions, commissioners? Okay, and I'll close that out right there. Um, Madam Chair, I'm just kidding, Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll?
Commissioner Kason, how do you vote?
Excuse me, we are voting for Commissioner Martin's, um, motion to send this back to Historic Preservation Board.
I vote yes, thank you.
Commissioner Williams, how do you vote?
Nay.
Commissioner Martin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey, how do you vote?
No. Okay, would you count that vote for me?
Three, um, three, two, four, no, um.
To send it back to the board?
To send it back to the board.
Okay, all right, so, um. Judge, please understand the fact that this commission has voted to have this go back for the board. I would like for uh, us to modify, I mean, at least come to a conclusion that the Historic Preservation Board will, would all expediently, um, look at this, this, um, proposal or this petition. Um, so we can get it back to, um, the judge in a very expedient time. In other words, if it's voted on, on the seventh, on the seventh, to be, those individuals to be notified.
No comment?
Yes, you comment if you want to.
I don't, I'm not sure that this council has the authority to remain. This council is accept, reject, or modify. But I'm not sure whether this council, either this council is gonna affirm the denial or accept with a, with a modification. I I defer to the city attorney, but I don't know what procedure do they have to remain uh, the matter of fact.
Well, well, was, was you right, you're right, sir. Uh, you are so right, um, and basically, it was suggestion to to send it back there, because it's gonna go back there anyhow. Uh, since, since, since this commission have, have, um, denied your, your appeal. Which means that Historic Preservation Board still has, has to approve your getting the, getting this, uh, typical of of appropriateness. It is semantics, but it's still the same as in, it's gonna go back to them anyhow.
Do I, do I have to go back before them again?
No, sir, I think you have, you have submitted everything already, so I think, uh, they should be notifying you on the seventh.
Do I have to appear? Because on the second, they took action without me being there. Do I have, suppose somebody took, do I have to go back or, do I have a date for consideration on the seventh? Why don't you ask Mr. Day that?
Can it not be handled on the backside of our meeting at this point? This is.
I would appreciate that.
Well, well, um, Judge, I will have, uh, our attorney to contact you and and give you the information that you need. Um, uh, um, Mr. Our city attorney, any comment before I move on?
No, I mean, we'll, we will coordinate with Judge Douglas to make sure that he has the que, answers to the questions he's presented.
And and please do it in writing, so there will be no misunderstanding, no interpretations. And that's, that, to, I mean, this is not against anybody, but we're here because this stuff has not been in writing.
That's so true, and I'm under pressure always, if we do something wrong, we get something wrong, we need to fix it, we need to get it right. We need to, and also hold our client harmless. Uh, so I I understand what Judge Douglas is saying, he has really, uh, has, um, it's costing him. And and, um, and Mr. Day, you, you alluded to about the process, about other folks doing things, about planning and whatever, that that may be true in a, in a sense. But, uh, if, if our process has had it going where we, uh, decided to go, um, and maybe, uh, we would have, wouldn't be in the situation we are.
Call Commissioner Harris.
And this is, go me?
I don't see a Commissioner Harris in your contacts. Who would you like to call?
Well, I will, I will just make this one comment that, um, if this, if this brings to light the need for a review of proper procedures of the Historic Preservation Board, then we need to make sure that those procedures are reviewed and modified so that, um, you know, things are done in writing as, as they should be when they need to be. And, uh, we have more defined procedures on how uh, folks and applicants are handled and dealt with.
Okay.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, I would suggest this, um, as a good faith measure to applicant. Um, because this has been, this, I understand where he's coming from, um. Uh, John, um, I would ask John to reach out to, um, him as well, um, or Matthew, uh, whomever. Um, in order to see what type of incentives we can offer, um, to kind of not pay the interest, but to kind of offset whatever we have the authority to offset in any incentives.
Well, again, I go back to my comment, and I'm, I'm not trying to be rude, but I don't understand how somebody can already have financing lined up when they don't have an approved plan and a design and a cost related to that. I, I feel like we're being pressured because of financial reasons of the applicant. We should not feel that pressure. That's my only comment.
Well, I, I don't feel like we're pressured, Commissioner Martin, I feel that, um, by us, uh, not notifying, uh, the individuals, uh, and he's calling us on that, we didn't notify, so that causes us, uh, to put, put the issue in our lap as to make a decision versus Historic Preservation Board. We realize all our boards meet, uh, uh, a long period of time, and and, and while they meet different times of the month, uh, that lag time causes money for, for some individuals, um, whether he got his financing, uh, right now, or he got his finances later, irregardless, it still is costing him something. The delay in time is costing something. It's a cost factor. So, but it comes to us.
I want to say this, um, uh, let's, what does, what does the, um, information that John presented? I know Commissioner Martin has made the motion. But, um, I, I just, I feel that we may have voted incorrectly on something. What, what is the information?
That, that was my question, because I thought that John presented something that he said had, had been reviewed. And, uh, uh, plans had been reviewed to that effect or something to that effect. That's why I asked the question earlier. Um, did, you know, did the Historic Preservation see or know that those plans had been submitted?
Well, one, one individual said he did not see him. Uh, Mr. Dukes, did you see him?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I think just to clarify exactly what happened, the board has reviewed the plans that included the hip roof with the red roof on it. The board has never met and saw the plans that were re-submitted to John Hunter, but not to the board of the flat roof building. We have not discussed that and reviewed that, which is what Commissioner Martin voted or voted on.
Right, I, I understand, but have you guys, if, if it's sent to you guys, can you guys review it in a timely manner, or do you guys need and review it?
Well, our, our, our regularly scheduled meeting is only three business days from now, so that, that would be on Tuesday, right?
Yes.
I, I think, I think, I have no problem reviewing it and voting on it on Tuesday.
Okay.
Do I have to be at that meeting?
This is a day, Mr. Hunter?
Inducts is optional for the applicants, uh, because Mr. Hunter will report the information decided on in that meeting to the owner. It's always beneficial to have the applicants there to answer questions and work through issues that the board might have, um, but it's, it's not a requirement, but it is encouraged.
Okay, all right, I think, um, um.
What time is this meeting?
Judge, Judge, you can get information from, from others, please. Okay, all right, let's, 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 let's just close this out. Realizing that, uh, you know, it was a, a heated thing, uh, it was a heated issue, uh, basically dealing with processes and also the lag time that dealing with doing it. So we realized that we have, have a gap, like, I think Commissioner Harris said, we need to take a look at this. Our processes, Commissioner Martin said as well to, take a look at our process and maybe, maybe we need to streamline, get this process, uh, correctly and not irregardless of Historic Preservation or irregardless of our, our planning director, uh, we still may need to get this thing straight, so, um, I can't say I'm glad it came before us, but I'm, I'm glad we're able to deal with it.
Mayor Harvey.
Yes.
Um, th- this is Naomi. Um, I was looking at the submission of John Hunter's, um, template.
Yes.
And the option he gave the commission was to uphold the decision of the Historic Preservation Board to deny the specific appropriateness, to modify the decision of the H P B, or to reject the decision of the H P B. And I think the vote was not on that.
So Commissioner Martin's, uh, motion was not on either one of those?
No, he had three options and those, yeah.
I would have considered it a modification of the denial so that they could go back and reconsider the plans that have been resubmitted.
I would say yes, that was my intent.
Well, I guess.
I, I, this is my question, and I, I'm, I'm just asking, uh, our city attorney this. When a person or a entity appeals a decision of a board of the city and brings it before the commission, isn't it that the, the job of the commission at that point to make a decision regarding that situation?
I mean, yes, I would say that, but I think it's pr- rather common that it be, uh, approved, denied, or modified, and I, I know we have in the past sent it back to the underlying board for reconsideration. That's what I, I mean, I've always considered that that to be the modification. I don't know if there's a, again, I think it's a little bit of semantics here of the nomenclature that's been provided, but I mean, I think that it's, things have been sent back for planning and the zoning board, and I, I did not see that as a, as a legal hurdle here. I think that is an appropriate, um, decision by the, the board. I mean, the Board of Commissioners in this instance is sitting as a Board of Appeals, uh, and and it's typical to see a, a board remand back to the lower, uh, lower level and for reconsideration, so that, that's where I've always considered.
Particularly when you've got new plans and new drawings submitted, they, they really need to be reviewed.
I would agree. I think we've got something to move forward with, and that's the positive we should all take away with this, from this, is that there has been a third plan, if you will, that has been submitted that looks as though it would be far more appropriate and in line with the guidelines, uh, which is the objective we're trying to reach in as timely of a fashion as possible. So I think we, uh, we have something we can move forward with, and we know what the, uh, protocol would be as far as getting it back before the Historic Preservation Board and letting them make a decision.
Okay, Ms. Ganakis, I know you're on board. Is something you want to say before I move on? I don't want to leave you out. You, you move it right now.
I appreciate the, the discussion that we've had, and we, I appreciate the opportunity to review the plans with the new roof, because we have not had that opportunity. So thank you for allowing us that opportunity.
Okay, um, one thing I'd like to say is that, uh, uh, Mr. Day, who is the chairman of the H P B, is to, when you have your meeting, immediately after your meeting, to get in contact with, with, uh, the applicant, the applicant, um, his, uh, architect or whomever, and let them know the outcome of your, you, you all's decision. Also, Mr. Hunter, I'm pretty sure he'll be there to make sure it is, is put, placed in writing, so we won't have to deal with this, and, um, uh, uh, we, we, we'll have to go from there.
It still doesn't take away from what I said with, um.
No, it does not. I, I was about ready to say that, Mayor, Mayor Proten, but I think we need to take a look at, uh, can we expend that to do that? Uh, so, uh, other than that, I, I will ask our, our city attorney to look into the aspect of doing that as well, as well as our city manager. Because I think, I think, uh, uh, we have, um, irregardless of how it all, uh, someone has gotten harmed here. Uh, whether he was planning or non-planning, but someone has gotten harmed. All right. I guess I will say this, all hearts and minds clear, and if it's not clear as mud, I don't know what, what it is. So I thank you all for, for being with us, um, Historic Preservation Board, and we thank you for the things you do, uh, realizing now, please, um, this, uh, is to be expedited, uh, as, as quick as possible. Uh, uh, and, um, so we can move on and and get something going on in our city. Appreciate what, what you guys do, the volunteer work that you do, serving that's helping us to make Brunswick a great, great city. Thank you, Mr. Hunter, as well. All right, uh, let's, let's just move on. Thank you, thank you, Judge Douglas, for your comments as well. All right, we're moving right along. All right, uh, we are at our next item. Um, our next item is, um, items for, consider for approval. It's, uh, number two, consider approval, August eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, public hearing, and August, public hearing, and August eighteen, twenty twenty-one, regular scheduled meeting minutes. Uh, this was submitted in our package. We all had opportunity to take a look at it and review it. Uh, and so we are now ready to make a, a motion of, um, motion of approval or denial.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, August eleventh public hearing, August eighteenth, regular scheduled meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you.
I got a motion, got a second for the approval of August eleven, twenty twenty-one, public hearings, and August eighteen, twenty twenty-one, regular scheduled meeting minutes. Uh, there any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? It appears the ayes have it. Thank you. Um, item number three, consider approval of financial reports as of July thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. Ms. Catherine Mills, our finance director, will be presenting.
Good evening. Okay, you have before you the financial reports as of July thirty-first, which is the first year of fiscal year twenty twenty-two. And, uh, you'll see revenues over, or revenues less than expenditures for the month of July, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Year-to-date is the same amount since we are in the first month. Uh, however, as I always tell you, at this time of the year, that is not an unusual occurrence since um, we're not collecting, you know, property taxes, stormwater, and, you know, all the other fees, so it's not unusual to show a deficit the first month of the fiscal year. We do have approximately four point eight million dollars in cash in the general fund as of July thirty-first. Um, you'll look at our loss numbers, and once again, we're at the first month, so year-to-date is the same. We are up twenty-five percent on local option sales tax collections in July of this year as compared to July of last year, which is, um, a pretty, pretty good jump there. And for our title add velorum tax, we are up thirty-eight point five four percent this July as compared to last July with a number of thirty-three thousand five thirty-seven. And I didn't mention, mention the dollar amount on loss, but for the month of July, loss was seven hundred and eighty thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars, which I'd like to point out is one of the higher numbers we have ever had, um. If you drop out that month that we got the big audit adjustment for two hundred and eighty-six thousand, I was looking back over the last few years, and I think that's the highest amount we've received in sales tax, um, during those, those. I was looking back over the last few years and I think that's the highest amount we've received in sales tax, um, during those, those last few years. On the second page, we have SLOX six, uh, as we know, SLOX six has ended, but there are still a few little adjustment dollars coming in. Uh, as you can see, sort of over in the middle or the last two. Well, the, in the last three columns, I have the original budget amount for SLOX six, which was 13.8 million. We have amended that budget at this point to 15.5 million by taking some of those excess colle- excess collections. That came in on SLOX six. We have approximately $5.2 million of cash still in SLOX six. Um, we increased that budget amount from the original amount by approximately 1.7 million dollars. And we still have some unallocated funds, if you'll see there on the left-hand side at the bottom of your page. For, um, $197,000 in overaging collection, the little G, Georgia D C A aviation fuel tax of 16,000. And the interest that has been earned in this SLOX six fund since its inception of $224,000. Next page is this SLOX five, we still have 1.35 million in this SLOX five account, which, um. We will be determining how that will be dispersed at a, I would assume sometime fairly same. Norristreet Commons, there have been no activity in that fund. It does have a balance of approximately $335,000. The Roosevelt Harris Multi-Purpose Center Fund, we have, uh, a balance of $30,000. Of course, that balances. Can fluctuate, um, it's at a high point at the moment because I, because we are the ones who put money in that account to cover what the grant doesn't cover. But the one thing I did want to point out is you'll see the grant revenue for July is 37,639. Last year about this time, and we were lucky to be getting 15 to 12,000 dollars. So. The adjustment was made with the C R C and our grant money is, is coming back up on the Roosevelt Harris Center. The next page, the sanitation fund, total revenue year to date, since we are in the, the initial month of the fiscal year, it's $33,000. Expenditures for the month, 151,000, which shows a loss of 151,000. But once again, the only revenue coming in, in the month of June was, um. A very small amount. We already have, uh, recorded all of the money that came in and was collected through the property taxes. So once again, that's not an unusual thing. And then you'll see a little farther down, we do have cash on hand in that fund of approximately $393,000, which. Um, gives you more of an idea of where we stand in sanitation. There's also still $194,000 in the sanitation fund. That we have set aside for calls on the T Street landfill if they are necessary. Sanitation bills for the month of July, total of 148,000, taken into account trash pickup, illegal refuse cleanup and street sweeping. Which is, uh, relatively, um, steady. The Stormwater Utility Fund, once again, we had inflows for the month of 4,600, since this is the one month, first month of the fiscal year. And once again, most of those fees come in when we collect property taxes. The outflows were 43,000, but we also, but we do have a cash balance in Stormwater Utility Fund of 414,000 dollars. We had no expenses paid out for animal control, traffic control, or the recreation department, um, building or the aquatics and equipment. There were no expenses for the month of July. The last page is the Roosevelt Lawrence Center. And we had year-to-date and monthly expenditures of 13,677 dollars. And obviously the majority of that money is spent on salary and, um, employee benefits. If you have any other questions, I'd be glad to entertain those.
Questions, what's our finance director? If not, I entertain the motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial report as presented.
Thank you.
The motion second for approval of finance report as of July 31st, 2021. Are there any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none from the opposing side, I believe the ayes have it. The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Mills. So you still here again. Item number four, consider approval of amendment 15 of the defined benefit pension plan.
Ms. Mills?
Yes, sir. Um, when the pension committees met, um, last, this past month. Where there was an amendment that was necessary to bring our plan into, um, compliance with an act that was done called the Secure Act. With the federal government and Mr. Clay Cartwright, the plan's attorney is on the, um, on the meeting to explain to you what the. What the reason why we need to amend the plan and add amendment 15.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much, uh, Ms. Mills. Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Harvey. Uh, good to see you again, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Harris and Commissioners here. Uh, so with the Secure Act that was passed by, and passed and signed to law in December of 2019, there was, there were several changes. There was also changes to qualify retirement plans with the CARES Act, um, that was put in place due to, obviously the pandemic last year. I've reviewed both the Secure Act and the CARES Act and all other applicable federal legislation up to this point. And there is only one change that affects our defined benefit pension plan. Now. There's the, um, the budget bill, the reconciliation bill that's before Congress. I don't know what, if any impact that's going to have, but this is the one amendment that's needed to bring this plan into compliance. Operationally, the plan has been in compliance with this amendment, uh, since December of 2019, as required under federal law. And we have plenty of time to adopt it. We have until 2024. And so we've got plenty of time here, but, um. Mayor Harvey, since you're going to be retiring soon from public office, or at least from the city commission, I wanted to make sure I brought it in front of you first, but, um.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, but here, it's just an issue of taking, um, people, individuals, um, who have left what we call deferred vested participants. Individuals who have left employment with the city have a balance in the plan. Under prior federal law that's been in place since the 1990s, they had to start taking distributions, um, no later than April 1 of the year. Following the year that they turned age 72, because we have to use fractions in Washington DC. Uh, so that has been changed under the Secure Act to age 72. And it's only impacting individuals who have, um, who have reached age 72 after 2019. And that's what this amendment does. It just merely brings the plan into compliance operationally in plenty of time as required under the Secure Act. I'm saying that to the city commission, um, don't be surprised if I'm not back before the commission in a year or two saying that they've raised the age to 75. Or they've eliminated the requirement altogether. Uh, there has been buzz in Washington DC, the actuaries following it, I'm following it as well to push that out. Um, because, um, despite the pandemic, well, if you take the pandemic out of the equation, which is a pretty, pretty big exception, people are living longer. And so these rules that were in place, you know, moving it up by 18 months over 20 years really doesn't reflect life expectancies before 2020 that, which have been increasing. So. I wouldn't be surprised if, uh, there's been proposals, um, to push the 75. And so it may, we may be back here in a few years and we'll just change it again.
Okay, any question, questions for Ms. Cartwright, Commissioners? Well, I got one question, it's all right. How many people, and maybe this is to Ms. Mills too, how many people does this affect right now?
I do not know.
I, 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 I can speak to, I can speak to the benefit statements, uh, Ms. Mills here, the ones that, that went out to participants. And I believe that we had, uh, less than, I would say it's less than 10. It's not that many.
Think it's not very many. Most.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's very, it's a very small sliver, even so, which is why we've been operationally in compliance, because the issue hasn't been raised. Uh, for the last, um, for the last, uh, 20 months since the, uh, since the, um, the law has changed.
Yeah, I'm seeing it, but most of them are taking their, their retirement.
Right. Well, we still have to amend the plan. The plan has to be, be pulled into compliance for federal law. So, um. So, so it's, you know, this may be an issue where it doesn't come into play, um, operationally, um, and for another year or two. Yeah.
So, uh, I have one question, um.
Yes.
In general, are we still operating in a, in a positive mode as far as our pension plan, our deferred benefit plan?
Uh, yes, and in, in terms of what we call the unfunded liability, we've been under on a increasing. Uh, we've increased the funded percentage, not the unfunded. We've increased the funded percentage over time. And I believe we're in, right now, we're in the 60s, which is not great, but compared to where we were after, when the Great Recession started, we were in the 30s. Here, and even when we put, put pickup contributions into the plan here, and I think many of us remember that back in 2012, uh, we were sitting in the 40s. And so we've had very good financial investment management, both Marshwinds and now, um, our most recent investment manager, Bowen Hayes. Here, it's been very, very good and we've kept the line on benefits here. In other words, we've made sure that we've, we've, we've held that very tight here so that, um, we, you know, by doing that, by having a very good investment management policy. Plus watching our wallet creates, um, an increase in funded percentage. And what's important for that, Commissioner Martin, is, is that once we hit, we, we, we start to hit the, uh, 75% threshold here. When we hit, start to hit that, it will enable us under Georgia law to be, be treated as a large plan. That provides us with more flexibility with our investments, because right now we're, we're restricted at 55%. Of our plan assets that cost to be placed in the stock market, which, um, which, which sort of hamstrings the, uh, um, the investment manager bit. Whereas a large plan can go to 75.
Yeah, because I, I remember when Commissioner Kason and I took office back in 2012, these were some big decisions that were sitting in front of us. Um, at that time and certainly asking for a higher employee contribution towards defined benefit plan. And wanting to keep the whole plan healthy was really, really important. So. Really, I appreciate your direction and the help that you've provided us as a community and as a, as a commission.
Well, thank you. It's the, the, um, the appreciation's mutual. I've been coming to this area for 20 years. And so I'm not sure if I, my body will last another 20, but we'll see how it goes.
Okay, um, any further questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the defined benefits pension plan amendment number 15.
Thank you.
There's been motion, there's been second for approval of amendment 15 of defined benefit plan, pension plan. Are there any further questions or comments?
You know, I'll just make a comment to what Clay said is really right. We've had a good, hardworking committee also, but. The stock market is absolutely our friend right now and don't forget that. Thank the Lord.
Wow, okay. All right, great. Um, any further comments? Madam, call a role for me again, please.
My apologies. Commissioner Kason, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes. It seemed that the yes vote have all, um, uh, said in affirmative. So, uh, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cartwright. I really appreciate you doing the things you do for, for us, uh, and keeping us straight, uh, and. Our pension plan is in, is in great health and I, I know that, um, our employees are very, very well, uh, appreciative of all the thing that you do. Thank you so very much, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Okay, let's move right along. Um, it seems that we are at the end of our, um. Appointed agenda. Now, is there any need for an executive session?
Yes, for litigation.
Okay.
And I believe you should have credentials.
Motion to approve, uh. Going into a, a journey from our meeting and going into executive session for litigation.
Second.
Motion second for us to move from our regular, um, meeting here to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, any opposes? None? Okay, we will move into executive session, after which we'll come back in our regular session and close out, uh, and, uh, dismiss our meeting. So I'll see you all in, excuse me?
No, I was just going to ask when were the credentials for the executive session sent out?
I'll resend them to you.
Okay, thanks.
Send them to me too, please.
Will do.
All right. Thank you.
Send them to me too.